All right, the Board of Commissioners, well, welcome to our work session for June 2nd, 2025. Chair Alom is, I think she's virtual today? No, so she is, she has an excused absence today. She is recovering. We wish her well. We look forward to see, having her recover and seeing her soon, very soon. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the Board or any resident fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until the individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such a time, such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Burton, would you be open to reading the land acknowledgement?
Yes, thank you Chair Lee. Land acknowledgement, as we convene for the Durham County Commissioners' Meeting, it is, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okanichi, Shakori, and Tuscarora peoples whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past, and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you Commissioner Burton. I really appreciate that. Okay, so going into our agenda for today, the first item on our agenda is citizen comments, and we have two thus far, and one's gonna be virtual, one is here in person. We'll do the in-person one first, and then we will do the virtual. Mr. James Chavis is first, and then we'll go to Mr. DeWorn Kay Langley, who was virtual.
Good morning to all county commissioners, and into the office of your chair. I come again before you all, thanking you all for y'all one day support when we came to ask for the signing off on the Durham City Declaration for the people and for our city county school board. You all was the first, and I have been letting that be known, okay? As you see, I have passed out some flyers. I hope y'all got it. But I'm gonna read the back. Y'all seen the first. I'm gonna read the back part, the declaration. The seven-day period from Saturday, June 28th, 2025 to Friday, July 4th, 2025, has been declared the Durham County Government and is pending declaring with the City of Durham and the county school board, where the city has signed off on. This is old and I had changed the disaster prepared this week. June 28th, 2029, from 11:30 till 12:30, a piece produced great demonstration for interest purpose to assemble on the sidewalk to connect these government bodies, the City of Durham, the Durham County Board of Election, the Durham County Government, to urge Durham County residents to start taking a part and making sure they are aware of. Not only that, in my closing, I would like to invite all the city, I mean the county commissioners, on June 11th of this month, which is on a Wednesday evening at 5 o'clock, we are, the members of this committee are calling a press conference to help push out this important of this disaster. We're asking the county commission, would y'all please come and join us at 5 o'clock? We'll be starting and standing in front of the Durham Park and Recreation Building across from the fire station. And the reason why we chose that location is to let people know that on one side is the school board, in the center is the Durham City, and the part that we cannot see other but you will know, across from that building is the Durham County. We want all those sidewalks to be filled with peoples, not only them, but also youth citizens that work and stay here in Durham. We are looking forward for you all to come out and help us to encourage others to get prepared and ready, as you may not be keeping up with it like I have. Disaster has been hidden many, many different cities in many, many different ways. And if y'all, and I'm gonna continue to say, our federal government will not be giving us any more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis. The next speaker is DeWorn Langley, who was virtual. Let's see here, okay. Can you hear us, Mr. Langley?
Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Just so you know, I can always hear you all that just waiting for the, to be allowed to be unmuted. So if you all, when you all have virtual speakers, just give them a moment to allow the clerk to unmute them, and then they can speak. And I don't want that to cut into my three minutes. But, good morning, Vice Chair Dr. Lee, Commissioner and Commissioners. I come to you this morning with an urgent plea, and I can't say this no better than I know how. I had a script, but I know I'm not gonna follow it, but I'm DeWorn Langley. I represent the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, an organization that I have led and volunteered for, for the past eight years, doing impactful work in this community to empower boys and young men of color to succeed in college, careers, education, the workforce, and in the community, and we need your support. We need $25,000 in this budget, and it only takes three votes, and I see that there are three votes here this morning, that can make that happen. And I know that this is a tight budget season. Not only do we need the $25,000 for the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, but we also need money for the My Brothers Keeper Initiative. Boys and young men of color in this community can no longer wait for you all to step up and make an investment. We need this now. The data shows it. Whether you're looking at juvenile crime complaints, whether you're looking at the murder rate, whether you're looking at perpetrators of violence and crime in this community, it is predominantly students of color, boys of color, young men of color. Only way that we're gonna change this trajectory is by making investment in evidence-based proven organizations and work that are working to build an ecosystem that better supports and prepare boys of color, young men of color, for the opportunities that are developing, growing here in this community. And it requires money. I'm not asking money for a salary. I'm asking money so that we can continue to operationalize the work that is being done in this community. I have students graduating, going to work for companies like Northwestern Mutual, Microsoft, Textron, going to graduate school at Duke University, East Carolina, UNC Chapel Hill. We need the support in order to continue this work. And as many grants that I applied for and get a response saying, unfortunately, this was a competitive process, and other organizations were chosen, I don't know what more I can do other than to ask you all, and then to turn to My Brothers Keeper. We have had this initiative in our community, but it has not been adequately funded. In order for us again to create the ecosystem that we need in our community, in order to better produce outcomes for boys and young men of color, it's gonna take money. So I need you all to please step up and make this investment so that we can do what is right, because we're already spending the money detaining them in the Durham County Detention Facility. We're already spending the money in the youth detention home. We're already spending the money at the funeral homes. We're talking about reimagining the work that needs to be done in order for dollars to be invested in the right place, in order for us to produce better outcomes. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. Appreciate that, and definitely taking that under advisement. The next item on our agenda, that concludes the citizen comments. At this time, if there's anyone who entered it, wasn't able to sign up, I'll give it just a moment. I don't really see anyone. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there, is there any item that we'd like to pull off, or?
And so what I'll do for the consent is read them, and since it's the first time, and if there are questions, we'll go through that.
Sounds good.
Fantastic. The first consent agenda item is 250209. This is an approval to enter into contracts for purchase of books and cataloging processing services for a total not to exceed $760,000. Okay. The next item is 250232. This is an approval of Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 25 BCC090 for the Department of Social Services to recognize Duke Energy Carolinas LLC 2025 Share the Light Funds in the amount of $35,000 for residents in crisis energy situations. The next one is 250233, approval of contract with Wall Recycling LLC for solid waste hauling services and equipment maintenance at Durham County convenience sites for an amount not to exceed $128,000.
Manager Hager and Commissioners, can I interject for one moment? Chair Alom has joined the meeting online, and I did ask if she has a question, to just raise her hand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next one is 250242. This is approval of Capitol Project Amendment 25042, recognizing $637,195 in community project grant funding for Emergency Operations Center and Backup 911 Capital Project. Yes.
I just wanted to congratulate our staff on that. That's huge, and glad to see that we actually received the money. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. And it's important to note that Durham County was the only county in the state to receive funding through this particular program in fiscal year 2024. So kudos to the teamwork that happened across many departments to move forward with an award-winning grant. Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 2591, which is item 250268, appropriates $10,000 of New Hope Fire Tax District fund balance, and increasing the distribution to the New Hope Fire Department for the purchase of computer equipment. He has questions?
Yes, I wonder if we could have Dwayne, we use this opportunity to explain the issues around New Hope Fire Department, and what is the resolution to that?
All right, Dwayne, and we'll have others on standby from the Budget Team, as well as Mark.
Good morning. Dwayne Brenton, Assistant County Manager. So this particular item is for computer equipment that is outdated for the New Hope Fire Department. New Hope Fire Department is located in Orange County physically, but they service an area within Durham County. We have several fire departments that do that. They're outside of Durham County, but service area within Durham County. So this particular purchase is to update some of their equipment. We are going through, as with all the other fire departments and county departments, going through the budget process right now. And we are trying to work out, you know, the expenses for New Hope, and trying to come to a resolution. I sent a communication to the Board over the weekend, I believe it was, and we're trying to be cognizant of the rebound, and responsible to the taxpayers in the area. So we have some strategies in place to help New Hope make it through the next fiscal year, we believe, and still maintain a responsible tax rate.
So the rate that you supported, which was the 6.41 cents, is that different than what's in our recommended budget?
That is what's in the recommended budget, 6.41, and that, that is also a cent and a half above the revenue neutral tax rate.
Okay.
Now, when you look at last year's actual tax rate, I should say this fiscal year's actual tax rate, the 6.41 is lower. But when you consider the revenue neutral tax rate, given the growth in the tax base, the revenue neutral tax rate is considerably lower. So 6.41 cents is one and a half cents above the revenue neutral tax rate. And that, as a percentage increase, that is the highest percentage increase of any volunteer fire department. So it's not quite what New Hope had requested, but it is the highest percentage increase of any volunteer fire department.
Okay, so in other words, with, due to the rebound, they actually will generate more revenue than if you were just looking at eight cents on the previous tax rate? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, they're getting a cent and a half more, relatively. They're getting a cent and a half more next year, you know, as we proposed. They're getting a cent and a half more next year over this year.
Okay.
And that's above natural growth, you know, revenue neutral considers natural growth, so it's a cent and a half net increase.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna be cognizant of what they documented about how they are providing increased service to Durham County, and it is a volunteer fire department.
And we will make it work. You know, we always work. It's not, it's not a one-time deal with any department, with any, you know, fire department, county department. So throughout the year, and we see budget amendments quite often, so throughout the year, as needs arise, and as they are vetted, we always make it work, and this will be no different.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next one is 250278. This is approval of Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 25 BCC092, appropriating Durham County Fire and Rescue Fund Fund Balance of $1,109,661 for the purpose of paying the City of Durham for the completion of Fire Station 18, as agreed under the June 2018 Interlocal Agreement with the City of Durham. Okay. The next one is 250279, approval to increase a service contract with a DESCO for temporary services in the amount of $254,450.84 for a new total of $716,902.21. And this supports our elections activities. And this supports our elections activities. The next one is twen, yes, question?
This is, I just had a quick request, which is, we haven't been over to the new elections site, and maybe we could figure something out over in August or something in groups to go see the new Board of Elections?
Absolutely. We will coordinate that visit.
Okay.
Yes, it's exciting.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yes. The next one is 250280. Approval to enter into a contract with Election Systems and software for hardware, firmware, maintenance, and support of voting equipment in the amount of $76,726.80. And the next one is 250281. Approval to increase a service contract with Election Systems and Software for ballot layout and voting equipment programming in the amount of $19,262.30 for a new total of $47,437. The next one is 250283. This is recognition of the establishment of an Advisory Committee for opioid settlement funding.
Wendy?
I just have one question about the terms of the appointment. It says that people will serve for a two-year term. And I guess it says it will be applicable for our appointment process. So does that mean that people would be eligible to serve for four terms? Because we have a year, what, could you remind us of what that means in terms of continuing to serve after four years? How would that work?
I am-
I mean, two years, sorry.
So normally, after that one term, they would reapply. I mean, I guess depending on the, I haven't looked over it. But if I'm not mistaken, after they do that one term, if it allows them to be able to apply for a second term, then they would be able to do two terms. And then after the four years, they would not be eligible.
Okay. I think it might be good to add something in the resolution that clarifies the term, the limit of the term. Just to be clear on that, so that when people apply, they understand they can reapply first, you know, whatever language you think is appropriate.
Yes, ma'am. I will get with Jason.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning again, manager.
Good morning.
So we've had some preliminary discussions about this advisory board. Could you sort of tell us what the timeline is probably going to look like to implement?
Sure, and I will ask Joanne to give some updates on that.
Good morning. Joanne Pierce, Assistant County Manager. I believe I'm answering a question about the timeline for the opioid settlement funding of-
That's correct.
Advisory group. So we are on the fast track with that. And if it is approved, then the group would like to, the manager would like to begin putting out the application and going through the process to have the boards, the council or groups start, I would say, late summer, if that's okay.
Yes, the intent, thank you, is for a fast track. We have a opioid town hall on Thursday. I believe it's at 6 o'clock, or 5:30, yes, 5:30, 7:30. And so that will generate lots of interest as well for the community. As ACM Pierce said, the hope is that we'll launch our notification for community members to apply. And with some aggressive processes and advertisements, hopeful to have by late summer that committee solidified with activities. There's lots of activities, as you know, the staff have been doing. So I know we can move forward pretty quickly once the members are identified. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is 250296. Approved acquisition of conservation easement, which is 19.37 acres, as permanently protected open space for $245,500.
Yes, I just have a comment. I just want to say thank you to the Celeste Burns and Perry Mans and everyone in Engineering Environmental Department for your detailed maps. Because I'm one of these types of people. I want to figure out, okay, where's a piece of property? I will literally go out there and drive, but your maps are awesome. Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
And I'll just piggyback on Commissioner Burton. Not only are your maps often, but awesome, but your agenda action forms, you know, as a commissioner, to be able to read something and have all of the information right there, understand what existing plans and policies it is connected to is just phenomenal. I hope we can talk about this later on as a board, what kind of agenda action forms we might want to create some standards. And because it really helps to make informed decision-making. And of course, also, I think the fact that we have a citizen coming forward and reaching out to our staff and saying, hey, we want to do this, is amazing that we have that kind of relationship and trust and track record with the community. So I just want to thank you all. Thank you.
The next item is 250302. Approved Budget Ordinance Amendment 93 appropriating $64,564 of general fund fund balance for matching grant recipient contracts in the county's matching grants program. Okay, the next one is 250307. Authorized the county manager to execute a contract with Perkins &amp; Will for architectural services for conceptual design and analysis of the shop of Hope Valley in the amount not to exceed $140,000. Trying to make sure I don't skip anything. All right, 25039, 0309. Approval to change the name of the current Ellis Road Fleet Maintenance Facility Capital Project to the Fleet Maintenance Facility Capital Project as well as authorize the county manager to execute contracts or architectural design services with HH Architecture and pre-construction services with Samment Corporation for the Fleet Maintenance Facility Capital Project. The next one is 250312. Approved Contract with Waste Industries LLC doing business as GFL Environmental for solid waste collection and hauling services for Durham County facilities for an amount not to exceed $80,000. The next one is 250313. Amend the contract with GFL Environmental to provide curbside recycling services to households in the unincorporated Durham County in an amount not to exceed $503,798.40. And this is for the fiscal year 2526 budget. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So households that are in the unincorporated parts of Durham County, do they pay an extra fee for these services? Like, it's just from my general knowledge. How does that work?
Yes, they do pay a fee to receive solid waste services. And Mo may have other comments. They can opt in to do this step.
They do pay a fee. And there are opportunities for people to use our convenience sites also, but they have to pay a sticker fee. Even folks from the city can actually buy a sticker to use those services. But for the recycling, yes, they do pay a fee.
Okay.
Yeah, this concludes-
I think that concludes?
Yes, sir. The consent item.
Consent agenda. Are there other business that the commissioners would like to speak about? Okay, then the next item on our agenda is adjournment.
This is unprecedented, and I know it's because we have budget conversations later today as well as time allotted tomorrow. So we will mark this day down in history.
All right. All right, so with no other business before us, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and promptly seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. We are adjourned.
And just to remind everyone, the Juneteenth ceremony is at 1:15, I mean, 11:15.
11:15.
Sorry. 11:15.
We will have transportation for those that do not want to walk on the side of the building at 11 o'clock. And we will also have lunch here at 12:30. So once the program is over, we'll come back here, have lunch, and then budget work session will begin at 1:00.
Okay, thank you.